I call the regular 6 o'clock meeting of June the 11th to order. If you would join Vice Chairman McIntyre as he leads us into invocation and follow him with a pledge of allegiance.
I just found out that sometime yesterday, am I coming through loud and clear? Everybody hear me? A firefighter from east side was killed in an accident on the way to a fire. And as I have the prayer, please keep him and his family in your prayers, please. I do not know his name, but please remember them. Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you again for so many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. And dear Father, we ask that you be with this young man's family. Let them know of your presence. Hold them in your arms and let them know that you're there for them. And dear Father, we pray for those who spend their days protecting us and making sure that we can continue to have the privileges and the freedoms that we have today wherever they may be serving and in whatever capacity they may be serving to protect us and to keep us safe. And now, dear Father, we ask that you be with us during this meeting, that we make those decisions that are in the best interest of our citizens and that will be pleasing to you. These things we ask in Christ's name for His sake. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you, Vice Chairman McIntyre. Everyone's got their agenda in front of them. Is there any adjustments to be made to the agenda? Any approval, everyone?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve as presented, second from Commissioner Swain. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item one, planning and zoning. Presenter Michael Sandy, planning director. Item A, ZA 18-04, consideration of the revised text amendments to Stanley County zoning ordinance. And we've got a public hearing as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is continuation from our last meeting. Per the board's request, the planning board met on May 29th to review their minutes from the April 9th meeting to review the language of the proposed amendment to the buffer requirement for existing residences near solar farms. Plan board made a couple of adjustments in the language to the proposed amendment. The board approved the minutes with the prior, with a minor revision in revised amendments at their May 29th meeting. Besides correcting the number for section 419, the board removed a provision of 618.5 that requires a buffer only on adjoining lots. The board understood that a home could be located within 300 feet, but a strip of land could be held by another owner in between. The board felt it was important to effectively screen all residences within 300 feet. They also considered how long the buffer should be. Some nearby owners may have large tracts of land, it would be unreasonable to require a solar developer to increase the buffer for the entire property. Conversely, if the property contains the residence was small, a short buffer may not be sufficient to make a thorough screen. The board decided to recommend that the increased buffer be extended to at least 300 feet in length. The planning department staff reviewed the recommendation revisions and believe that this is an enforceable standard that is reasonable and offers adequate protection to existing residences. It also provides some flexibility for the zoning administrator to consider topography and adjust requirements to be reasonable. The increased buffer requirements would only affect those properties with existing residences within 300 feet of the property line. This amendment would not require additional buffers if the residents were added at a later date. Plan staff supports this language as an effective way to protect nearby residences while allowing the economic benefits of the SEPGS overlay district. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sandy? No questions, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this text amendment? Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert. Make a motion, we approve the text amendment, ZA 18-04. Got a motion to approve the text amendment in ZA 18-04. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner LaHahn, I believe. Any discussion? Seeing none, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Item B, ZA 18-03, Stanley Solar LLC requests the establishment of solar electric power generating system overlay district. Presenter Michael Sandy.
This is continuation of the last meeting, a public hearing. Stanley Solar's request is still the same as last meeting, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sandy? Board. All right, we've got to have a public hearing on, I guess it's a continuation. Our public hearing's still actually open from the last meeting. Okay. So we'll just reconvene that public hearing, and if there is anyone here that wishes to speak for or against that, please come forward. Any citizens? If you will, just for the record, give us your name and address.
Edward Gann, 34272 Mabry Road, Alomarol. Good evening, Stanley Commissioners. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you. Since I was here last during the public hearing on May the 11th, my spouse Sandra and I have received a number of encouraging words, supporting communications toward the efforts we've made to identify and inform others about the complex unknowns and the impacts of a 400 acre solar farm installation in our local community area. A number of our neighbors and friends and nearby landowners have stated their displeasure regarding the loss of farmland, the effect on wildlife habitat, and the impact on adjoining land values, and their opposition to the proposed Solterra Stanley Solar LLC project. These persons have relationships within the old Aquadel Road community and the region of Stanley County, and they feel they must exercise a measure of reserve in regard to any public communications they may have. Additionally, we have received information from other nearby landowners who own sizable farmland acreage, that they were previously strongly pursued by both Solterra Partners and Orion Reliable Energy Group in previous months. These landowners rejected proposals by both solar groups and have communicated to us that they were concerned especially with the components of decommissioning a solar farm once it has reached its useful life. Think for a moment about the Stanley County Land Use Plan, the version 2008. Here's a direct quote, "Preserving prime farmland as an important resource is essential for the community as well as future generations. Agricultural cropland and pastage is the single largest land use in Stanley County." Some of you may be aware of the town of Spencer, North Carolina, our neighbor to the north, that in 2017, they enacted a 60-day moratorium on solar energy sites in their town. This was a result of a conditional use permit request for a proposed 100-acre solar site that was directly across the road from an already operating 32-acre site. The Alderman, Board of Aldermen of that town realized that this was in direct violation of their land use plan and their guiding principles about protecting existing neighborhoods. Additionally, it seems the Spencer Aldermen and other officials there were aware of other solar projects on the way to them, and they realized that there would be a clustering of solar projects in their area adjacent to multiple existing family residences. A loss of agricultural land would occur and impact on their wildlife habitat as well. Their statement was that this would adversely affect the impact of quality of life in the town and its extraterritorial jurisdiction residents. A key point in this matter is this, ladies and gentlemen. The Spencer Board of Aldermen determined that waiting for additional work to be done by the planning board regarding solar energy ordinance changes in lieu of passing an immediate moratorium would be an inadequate course of action, resulting likely in the loss of aesthetic appeal, reputation of the town, they like to call themselves the train town there in Spencer, and probably would have led to more clustering of that. The 60-day moratorium for them was their stopping point, hold, let's get a handle on this. Spencer's land management director was already preparing draft zoning ordinance adjustments regarding solar energy systems in their area, and these were to be submitted to their planning board through the right processes and then on to the Board of Aldermen. Let me give you a short summary of their results there in Spencer, of the solar energy zoning ordinance that they ended up with there at the 60-day time. It includes a detailed decommissioning plan with signage by landowners and other responsible parties, all on paper. It outlines the timeframe that would be involved for the decommissioning work. It clearly lists and updates, provides a provision for updating decommissioning plans should they need to change due to environmental regs or other issues through the life of the solar. It requires a surety performance bond with automatic annual renewals, with certificates being provided annually to the town land management department. The estimate of that cost would be developed in conjunction with an engineering firm who has knowledge of solar installations and a best figure that can be put together of what it would cost to get that done. The decommissioning plan would be recorded at the registered deeds office, and they added one new section to their improvements they had on their zoning for solar installations. It's called prevention of clustering. And to quote what they had to say in a paraphrased way, "No new solar system would be allowed within a specified distance or distances of an existing or previously permitted solar energy system." Now, you can go on their site, as I did, and I have some extra copies if you need them tonight, in paper, of their ordinance. That varies depending upon other factors that's there, but their overguiding one is this, is as the crow flies, no other solar installation within at least one geodesic model. That's their guideline. So, Board of Commissioners, I offer once again some recommendations and requests of you this evening that I personally feel are fair to all parties who are here tonight, fair to this board, and will allow Stanley County to be an out front county leading the efforts in working cooperatively with landowners and solar, preserving farmland, meeting all the elements that are there. It begins that we do have to deny this request from Stanley Solar LLC and immediately impose a moratorium. You may recall in my previous presentation to you a month ago, I used the number six months. I'll put that back in the mind. I don't know if that's correct. That's up for you, ladies and gentlemen, to decide, the time of a moratorium. How quick can you and your staff work toward preparing ordinances that match up with what we'll call serious mega-sized solar? Take propretation to assemble citizens, officials, county government departments, who will all work cooperatively to identify these recommended zoning amendments and directives so that everyone becomes involved, of those who choose to be. Involve communities, involve regions, involve other municipalities, involve transportation, involve natural resources and conservation, involve the agricultural production world with ag districts. Get the input from all these persons who will have a stake or be affected by it. I'm still including my suggestion to provide some open, come and listen workshops for citizens so that they will learn the facts about solar and not the fiction. And then proceed to compile these into zoning directives, ordinances, requirements, whatever way you choose, so that they will place Stanley County and its citizens in good stead and then establish these into zoning section 618, which is part of the solar power generation system overlay. Gentlemen, I'm going to go off script for just a moment and let you know that I sincerely do feel that this is fair. This is a good recommendation. I hope you will consider it. None of you have heard me attack solar in the times I've talked to you, and I've talked to a number of you by phone, and some of you I just wasn't able to reach today as a final follow-up. What's important here is that as a county, we get ahead of this and not let this drive us. I also feel as though, I don't know about the landowners personally, I have not talked to them, but I can't see how some moratorium period is going to impact them significantly. We heard from Stanley Solar LLC, they're still waiting to hear from Duke Energy about what the contract's going to look like, how it's going to go. And I realize they have to be making plans about that. I'm not asking for something other than what seems to be a logical way to proceed here. I do ask that you give this serious consideration, and I appreciate your time this evening. Mr. Chairman, would you like a copy of the town of Spencer's ordinances?
Sure. All right. Be glad to have it.
Mr. Chairman, should I wait here for any questions, or are we good?
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Gann? I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak for or against Stanley Solar LLC's request? Yes, sir. Come on forward. If you will, just state your name and address, just for the record, so we'll have it.
My name is Roger Poplin. I live in Greensboro. I grew up in Stanley County. I went to schools in Stanley County. My mother, my mother has lived here all of her life, except recently she's living with us because she can't live alone. We have managed this farm, we rent it out in the past, and we've been approached several times about solar energy through the years. And I've looked at it, I've done a little bit of research on it to satisfy myself. We had this, we entertained this particular project recently, and it looked very good to us. And so I just, I feel like it's a very good thing, not only for our family, but I think it's a good thing probably as far as I can sell for Stanley County, from a property tax standpoint. Solar's been around for quite a while. I don't see a great risk here. I think it's pretty good. And one of my purposes is, as an owner, as a property owner, to stand up here, if you have questions for me, I'll be glad to respond as best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Poplin. Does the board have any question for Mr. Poplin?
Chairman, I do have one question. Currently, the acreage that's being farmed, is it being farmed by one farmer, two, three?
One farmer.
And who is that farmer, and what kind of crops were they?
It has been Doug Bowers, who's my cousin. And it's turned over to someone else right now who's farming it. Of that, there's about 142 acres, and only about 80 of them are farmed. The rest are, you know, it's in small timber or it's unproductive property.
Any other questions for Mr. Poplin? Thank you, Ms. Poplin.
Good evening. Dennis Richter, 4200 Arbor Way in Charlotte with Solterra Partners. I really just wanted to come up here to answer any questions you may have. I do have my presentation with me, but you all saw it last month, and I see you have a big agenda, so I won't pull it out and go through it, but I have it here if you'd like to see anything. You know, really, I don't want to really address every point Mr. Gann made, but I think the main one that I would reiterate for all of you is that, you know, a solar farm is a, it's a business. So, you know, we're coming to Stanley County and wanting to locate one of our businesses, which is the solar farm, here so we can sell kilowatt hours to Duke Energy. You know, the investment in this farm is 70 to 80 million dollars, and I've shared with you in the past what that would mean in property tax to the county, but I think the point is that we've come, we have a viable business, we believe it's a good land use, that it's not a land use that is going to create any issues, it's not going to create any demands at all on your services, and it will be here for a long time. Now, you know, are there permanent jobs with it? There will be a few, because there's not a lot of maintenance at a solar farm on a daily basis, but for the nine months that is under construction, there will be thousands of people that will work there over the course of those nine months. Most of them will be, at least the senior people will be brought in, they'll be in hotels, they'll be using restaurants, they'll be using your suppliers and vendors here in Stanley County. So, there is a decent economic impact, and as the solar farm ages, there'll be updates to it, there'll be people, people coming to the town, and there'll be people hired to maintain it. So, it's not a factory, but, but it is, you know, it's a sizable concern, and I just encourage you to really consider the positive impacts of what happens in Stanley County. And of course, I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Matt.
I just, I just have one question, Mr. Richter. I know one of the major concerns, and I see it from participating in the field, more of a hobby standpoint of agriculture, but does Solterra ever partner with farmers for grazing and things like that? I know the Candor site, I think it's in Candor where they actually have some grazing opportunities for local farmers, and they kind of trade those out. Does Solterra ever participate in those?
Some of our farms, they were built several years ago, do have sheep on them. So sheep are often used to keep the grass down. They're really the only animal that they can be used because they don't try to eat the wires and any of the other things that are around the system. So, but they're managed by a company that was actually started here in North Carolina to do just that, and that is to, you know, they have herders, they have equipment that they bring the sheep in, and the sheep are, you know, kind of herded to different sections of the farm so they get all the grass cut. So, to the extent that a local farmer could do that, they could, you know, but it's a little bit involved, just because there's a lot of safety issues concerned, but, but we do, yes. And most likely, the maintenance on the grass, which would be cut three to four times, you know, that will be, that will be hired out locally.
Any other questions?
Chairman. There was a mention a while ago about the Duke contract. That was a month ago. That had not been finalized. Are you any closer to getting that finalized, or?
Well, part of the timing for the meeting and the approval is that in July, we have to submit this project along with several other projects around the state to Duke Energy through an RFP process, which has been, which is new to North Carolina. It was adopted back in October by the legislature after a long negotiation between the solar developers in the state and Duke Energy. So, we can't just apply to Duke any longer and get a power purchase agreement. There was a prescribed process for that in the past, that's no longer available. So, we won't, we don't know when we put all these things together whether or not it will actually get an award for a power purchase agreement. So, we don't know, not because we, they won't give us one, it's because the process hasn't started.
Oh.
And that process will go through the end of the year, and there'll be four total RFPs, so if this project isn't selected, then the first one will go through the other ones.
So what happens if you don't get the contract?
The farm doesn't get built.
Any other questions? Board?
I will amend that, I'm sorry. That is the primary vehicle for a solar power contract, but there are two other possibilities that are evolving. One is called a green source rider program that Duke has to modify so that we can use it, which would allow us to sell the energy to like Apple, any corporation in North Carolina that we, that would virtually meter it. So that means we don't have to be on their campus. That is a program that is being fine-tuned now. So, if we're not successful in the RFP process, it'll probably go into that green source rider and make an offer in there as well. There's also a program called PURPA, where the project, we may simultaneously do all three of these, where the project could get a power purchase agreement based on rates set up annually, semi-annually in the state. Problem with that is it's a five-year contract, and it's hard to finance a project with a five-year contract. So, those things are evolving all the time.
It'd be fair to say that if Duke didn't come through, then you could go ahead with the solar farm.
Yeah, there are other options. That is the, that is the most direct option right now, the Duke option.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Richter.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that is here that wishes to speak for or against this project? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I really don't know a lot about solar energy, so I can't speak to that, but I just have concerns about how big this project is, 400 acres worth or right at it. And I'm not saying that I will, will support or won't support, but I just have those concerns about how big it is. I do think it would be good for the county with the revenue, and I've given a lot of thought, but just wanted to make that statement. I'm just concerned about the size of this. And, you know, take into consideration some of Mr. Gann's recommendations that we might want to have our planning and zoning to look into, you know. We don't want to have a whole county full of 400-acre solar farms, I don't think, but land that's not being used for, you know, that people want to move forward, farmers and so forth, to do something with their land if they're just renting it out or that kind of thing. We don't want to hold them back either. So, I just wanted to make that known about the concern I have about the size of the solar farm.
Any other questions or comments? All right, what you guys want to do?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Stanley Solar's request for establishment of a solar electric power generating system overlay district to portions of the six tracts stated.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Got a motion from Commissioner Morgan, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Sandy, do we need any further instructions for Mr. Richter or anything? You guys, you got all that worked out? Okay. All right. Item two, public hearing for fiscal year 1819, recommended budget. I'll just ask, before we open the public hearing, if there's several subjects and several folks for each subject that wish to speak, if y'all will try to maybe group a particular subject and pick a speaker or two to come forward, just so we're not talking on the same thing. Looks like we've got several folks leaving. I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. If you wish to speak in regards to the proposed budget, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak on this year's proposed budget? Well, all right. I thought we'd have several folks coming, but we got that handled. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move right on down the list. Item three, item three, public hearing on the proposed resolution authorizing the exchange of real property. Presenter Andy Lucas, county manager. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is actually related to a project that you're working on out at the airport in conjunction with the Air National Guard to strengthen and expand the runway. As part of that, there's some property that we need to acquire. And the board has been able to work out an agreement to exchange some property that we have, I guess, on the north side of the road for, or excuse me, the south side of the road for some property on the north side of the road. So, that's the item you had before you. This requires a public hearing, given it's an exchange of real property. And so, you'll just need to call the meeting to order and see if there's any comments for or against, and then take action as the board deems appropriate.
Any questions before I hold the public hearing from county manager from the board? I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this real property exchange? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution authorizing the exchange of the properties, sir.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eifert, second from Commissioner Lauder. Any further discussion?
Just one comment, the exchange of this land, larger piece for a smaller piece. I understand the benefit that the airport will receive, even though we're receiving a smaller portion of land. But for the future use of Stanley County Airport, this is a good swap for the airport.
Commissioner Lauhon is correct. This will, the benefits of this swap will far exceed any negative for the county, in my opinion. Any other comments from the board? Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item four, presentation of Stanley County's Aging Funding Plan for fiscal year 19. Presenter Becky Wimhoff, Senior Services Director. Good evening, Becky.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to present to you the Stanley County's Aging Funding Plan for FY19. This funding plan is a home and community care block grant budget that we received that funds the six aging programs in our department. And the six aging programs are in-home services, Level 1, Level 2, congregate nutrition, home-delivered meals, transportation, and information and assistance. We will be receiving $416,742 next year in HCCBG funds. This is actually a slight increase from what we've gotten in last year. And it's one of our, it's an increase over the past several years. So, we're excited about it. It's only $416 more, but it is an increase. But as required, the block grant committee met, discussed, distributed, and voted on these aging funding plans to be distributed among the six aging programs. And they also voted on a contingency plan, too, that in case we get more money throughout the year, that contingency plan and the amount of money we get will determine if they'll need to meet again or if they've, or what they voted on will be, will carry us through. I know you have an electronic copy of our aging funding plan, and I am requesting approval for this funding plan to be approved and acceptance into the county budget of these funds. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ms. Wimhoff? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept this report as presented and that we accept the funding plan for fiscal year 2019.
I have a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Morgan. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky. Item five, Stanley County Utilities. Presenter Donna Davis, our utilities director. Good evening, Donna.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I thank you for the opportunity to present these two items to you this evening. The first I would like to bring to your attention is related to the hookup grant. Stanley County Utilities had a hookup grant program this year for the first time in several years. And what we did was we went back and we contacted everybody in the past several years who had expressed an interest in participating in this program and asked them if they were still interested and had them requalify based on low to moderate income, household income, and all the other components of the hookup grant program as it was run under the HUD guidelines. We were able, we have been able to, we were provided $60,000 in funding for this program, and we were able to complete installation of a water and one sewer connection to 18 homes with the funding that we had so far. We still have eight homes that qualified under the program that we have not been able to complete. And I'm requesting that we would extend funding, another $24,000, to make sure that we can complete these additional eight homes. That allows them to have a private plumber come in, connect them to the Stanley County Water System, and pay their TAP fees to the county so that they would be active participants of our water system. Some of these folks are paying availability fees, but they're not connected to the water system because their household income just doesn't allow them to afford that expense. So, this would close out our list, and it would also give us the opportunity that since we've had the program administered by the Central Island Council of Governments, we wouldn't have to go through and pay them a fee to finish these folks, the remaining eight folks next year or in another program. So, I would suggest if we could close these eight out, then we would close the program. And in a couple of years, if there's additional interest, we could go back and we could reestablish it. But I hate to leave these eight homes out there, having requested, having qualified, and having to start over again. We did two contracts. We have one list of eight homes that we would extend as another contract that local plumbers could bid on. And so, we're requesting that additional $24,000 in funding from the utility general fund or retained earnings to go ahead and complete this project.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Commissioners, it took me a second. I don't know if everyone saw it, but we don't have an item B, A, or B under item five, but there are two items in there. Took me a second to find that, but.
There is information.
Correct, correct. Does anyone have a question or comment?
Chairman, I do, I have a question. Ms. Davis, these eight houses, are they in addition to the original contract that was presented in here? Are they houses that were there, but we didn't have enough money to cover those?
When we, when we came up with the budget, when the federal government was just giving the state money, they would give us $75,000 in funds for the program. And you could do as many houses you could do with the $75,000. In some communities, they didn't spend all of the $75,000. So, what we did was we came up with a budget with the help of the board, and that budget was $60,000. Then we went back to qualify those homes, once we had a budget and a program in place. And so, we ended up with more homes than we could qualify, than the funds could expend. In the interim, I think we've had one house since the program was funded that contacted us. So, these were all folks who were on a previously existing list. We just did not know how many of them were still interested, how many of them would qualify. And so, when we came up with the funding originally, it was $15,000 less than what the federal government would have given us under the blanket program. And this request would put us about 12% higher than what that funding used to be seven or eight years ago. And we're getting a good number of houses. Usually, they would do about 20 to 25 homes with that money, considering that it's been seven or eight years to get 26 homes with that. That, $84,000, I think, is a, is a fair, a fair expenditure of funds in terms of what the cost is for plumbers to come in and for our TAP fees, which have also gone up slightly in the last couple of years.
Mr. Chairman, I guess a better way to phrase my question, the original contract was awarded to a company in Cabarrish County. You correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, yes, there were, there were two contracts that were awarded to that same company.
Okay.
These are, they were finished under the original money.
So, they could do that work for what was awarded?
Yes.
Okay.
They were on budget. We had about $4,000 left over, and this would accomplish the contract that was not bid, those eight additional homes that were not bid under those two contracts. So, yes, that plumber did perform, and he did perform on budget. And these were for additional homes that weren't bid in those first two contracts. I'm sorry about that.
So, the $45,897 is for the eight additional homes, which will be placed out for bid?
It's actually for $24,000. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
$24,000, so those eight homes will be placed out for bid among local contractors?
They will. And that also includes not just their plumbing fees, but also the TAP fees to the county for the connection that we have to provide as well.
And the local contractors that will be submitted the information so they can bid? I guess you have a list?
We send it, we get a list from our central permitting of every licensed plumber in Stanley County. And we send the award or the bid package to those plumbers, and we give them about two weeks to investigate and to respond. And that's generally the process. If, you know, something happens and somebody tells us, look, it's just a bad time, it was a holiday, we have extended that. But generally, two weeks is about the length of time they have to go and take a look at those eight homes and then get us back a bid if they're interested.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Davis?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Swain.
I have a question. I would like to move to appropriate the funds as described in the attached budget amendment.
Got a motion to approve $24,000 in funds from Commissioner Swain and a second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any further discussion? Ms. Davis, I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
I believe the last several hookups that we did, the amount was less than 2875. What is the difference? I think last time it was like $2,000.
Well, again, the prices have gone up in terms of, for us, only slightly for our TAP fees, but also just the expense of getting a plumber. And of course, the more bids we get in, the more competitive it generally is. But, you know, that.
The last bid process was only several months ago, was it not?
Oh, these are based on the original. So, the average cost is just what it came out to look at all of those individuals and then to go back. And these are not, again, this includes in general $1,100 worth of funds to pay Stanley County Utilities. So, if you subtract out $1,100, on average, it's about $1,700 for the plumber to do his part of the work.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I thought you were raising your hand.
I don't vote.
Thought we'd done something wrong for a minute. All right, motion carries seven to zero, and Andy, our county manager, has a comment.
I just want to say, I mean, Donna's just putting a budget number out there. It'll be depend on the contractors in terms of what the, what the amount ends up being. We hope that there'll be some local contractors who get very competitive and will be doing, and then we can potentially be able to hook up a ninth home. So, we've just, it's our responsibility to put a budget to you so you can, we can have funds available to do this. But we don't know what those, it may, we hope it comes in under. But, you know, we've done, I think typically, you know, Donna and working with our engineer come, are pretty conservative with their budget numbers. And usually, we come in, you know, pretty, pretty close to budget or under budget.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I do have one last comment to Ms. Davis.
Yes, sir.
I hope you can get a local contractor to do it.
We'd love to see them participate. You know, and I think once, things kind of fell off track because we were doing them every year. And so, I don't know whether it just, you know, showed up and they weren't, they weren't prepared for it. Or, like I said, they've been extremely busy in terms of some of the folks when we were doing baiting and we had to get some, the people out there need to get local plumbers. They were really having a trouble getting responses because apparently they're quite busy right now. So, I hope that's the case, and I hope we get some local bidders. But maybe it's a good sign for our economy if our tradespeople are that busy. And maybe they can work us in.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I believe you've got another item as well for us.
Yes, sir. The remaining item has to do with the D Street Sewer Pump Station up in the Richfield Community. As you all know, that we receive wastewater from Pfeiffer North Stanley or from that area, from Pfeiffer University, from some local residents in Meisenheimer and from the town of Richfield. And this all collects in the D Street Pumping Station. And to my knowledge, this pump station has not had any major overhaul in my tenure, in the 16 years that I've been here, which dates back to 2002. So, while we were doing the communications upgrade, the operator out there said he had some concerns, and he requested a review of that pump station. And just so that you understand, and the public understands what we're getting, we're not getting a new pump, we're not getting rehabilitation to the building. Essentially, what we're getting is replacement of the computer system. So, you can kind of think of it as in your car. If your computer goes out in your car, and it has to be reinstalled or reset or reprogram, it's a fairly expensive item. So, this pump station, to replace the entire pump station, would probably cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $750,000. What we're replacing or asking for funding to replace is that control system, that computer system that allows this pump station to operate the way it should. And so, we've got a contractor with whom we're working who gave us an estimate. And under the contract, it's a little bit cheaper to have him do it while he's still working with us. It also means that we don't have to initiate another, initiate another contract. And we're just requesting before they leave and close out that final component of the communications contract that they are working on, that we could extend it and add additional $45,897 to replace this control system in the D Street Sewer Pump Station. And this funding, again, would come from utilities retained earnings.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Davis?
Ms. Davis, I do have another comment.
Yes, sir.
I believe in spending our money local. This company's here doing the work now, they're out of South Carolina, if I'm reading this correctly.
That is correct.
Do we have companies in Stanley County that do this type work?
We put this out for bid. We do not. We have, the company that we have been working with was in the Huntersville area. They're a little bit closer. But when we did the bidding for the last, the larger component system, they were a little bit more expensive. And so, we could initiate a contract with that old company. It will probably be a little bit more expensive because it would be standalone as a part, as opposed to add on to this larger contract. But we do not have any Stanley County companies, to my knowledge, that are able to perform this type of work.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Any other questions, comments from the board? Most pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the request for this project of $45,897.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, who'll have a second. Second from Commissioner Morgan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for the confusion.
That's okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Item six, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Memorandum of Understanding for Social Services, presenter Andy Lucas, county manager.
Thank you, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, we're responsible, or we're basically mandated, beginning in fiscal year 2018, 2019, to enter into a memoranning of understanding with the state, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, that'll basically govern the performance of our social service functions. Child Protective Service, Foster Care, Child Support, Low Energy, Income Assistance, Work First, Food Stamps, Adult Protective Services, Special Assistance and Child Care subsidy. And I may have missed one or two service functions, but that's, generally, it governs the majority of everything we do that involves state dollars, the state oversight of those dollars. The MOU has specific processing standards, protective standards in terms of the timeliness that we address protective service issues, as well as follow-up and audits on certain types of benefits. And so it's basically trying to hold counties accountable for the dollars in those programs to make sure that they're ensuring certain outcomes. Counties have expressed concern through our association. The DSS Association also expressed concerns. There was a lot of give and take, a lot of back and forth. Initially, this wasn't called an MOU, it was called a contract. And so we've tried to work on language that made it feel less binding, even though this is still an MOU, and you're going to have to live up to it, or there's corrective action plans, and if you don't meet those, then there's potential penalties in withholding federal and state money for those programs. We've, at this point, our association isn't seeking to address any other concerns within the agreement itself. They feel like the counties and the DHHS have heard them, and they've made some concessions and made changes, and so our association isn't pushing for any additional changes. The DSS Directors Association, I think there are some things being circulated among them in terms of a signing agreement that would be, that would go along with this, that we would submit, that would essentially express some additional concerns. We would sign it, but also sign this signing agreement would address some additional concerns so that the DSS folks feel like they've voiced those concerns and put those in writing. The action I'm seeking tonight, we don't have a choice about signing this MOU, we need to sign it. And so the question I, or the action before you is to designate a signatory or signatories that will basically bind the county in terms of the conditions of the MOU. And so we're basically signing on behalf of the county, saying we will live up to this MOU. And I'm recommending that you designate myself, and you also designate Dolly Clayton as the two signatories for the county that will be responsible for signing this document and ensuring that we follow the MOU and follow the corrective action plans and take the appropriate steps to do that. So that's the action before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions for the county manager?
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming this is something new, right?
Yeah, this was legislation that was actually put in place in June, or excuse me, July of 2017. And so it's taken a year to get us to this point. I don't think, I don't think DHS thought it would take that long. But it's been a very, I say collaborative, I think we forced the collaboration, but it's been a collaborative process to get us to the MOU that's there. It's certainly way better than it was back in, you know, the Christmas timeframe. That time of year, there were some real holes in the MOU and some real concerns, and they've come a long way to address some of those items. But yeah, this is a year-long process and based on legislation that was introduced and passed in the General Assembly last, I guess, last July, June, July timeframe, when they were wrapping up session.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this will be done every year? They'll sign a new one every year?
That's correct. They'll have a new one, and I believe that there'll be some continuous improvement in terms of the MOU. I think as we live and we learn together with DHHS, that there will be some give and take on enhancing some of the performance outcomes and tightening those up in terms of some of the benchmarks, based on, you know, a full year of working with 100 counties through this MOU. So I think it's an evolving process that will, that we will, every year, have an opportunity to offer feedback, but it will be something that we will, at this point, based on the governing statutes, will have to enter into every year.
Question maybe for Donna. Have you seen the performance standards yet? Wayne, Dolly, I'm sorry.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Have you seen what the performance standards are going to be? I mean...
Yes, I have seen them, and I've shared those with the county manager, and they have changed since the beginning of the document. They've taken out several of the components that were not tied to either statutes or policies as far as deliverables.
Any reason to think that we can't meet the standards?
Well...
Have we met them in the past?
We're going to do our very best to make sure that we meet those standards that are in the document. We do have some challenges with the system, the information system that the state provides to us that are outside of our control, but we will certainly document all our efforts to meet those standards.
It wouldn't be NC fast, would it?
It would be NC fast.
It would be NC fast. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I know that we do well. I'm in on the board, so I know that we always do well. So just a question.
But we're doing the best we can to meet the standards as they're stated.
And I think there's other items that are out of control, certainly with the court system and how it's calendared. I mean, there's only so much you can do in terms of that calendaring and meeting some of these...
Right.
Some of these standards. And so, again, I think that's where there's going to be communication between our staff and DHHS to clarify what's happening, and it's not, you can have a number out there, you know, or you can set a benchmark, but it's not always, we always aren't in control of that court calendar. So I think there will be, there will be that opportunity to provide input and be collaborative, and hopefully reasonable heads will prevail when we're making decisions. And then, you know, if we get into a corrective action plan, we'll be able to document that.
Right.
Hopefully, there won't be any punitive, you know, withholding funds if everyone's being reasonable and there's certainly, clearly, it's out of our control.
And working with those other systems to modify those measures as needed, because they did indicate that these measures will be modified over the course, depending on other changes that might impact us.
Do you think this is a move toward regionalization of DSS? That was brought up.
I don't specifically think it's a move towards regionalization. I think it's a move towards the state, you know, I think it's partly, this was, this came out of, this came out of that regionalization discussion.
Right. It's the same bill, House Bill 630, where that discussion did occur.
I think it's to try to create some standards of care, standards of performance, that all 100 counties will be held accountable to, because I think there certainly are examples, I believe, and so I don't think it was, I think that the legislation was well-intentioned on the part of the individual who introduced it, because there were, there were some inconsistencies in how certain counties were performing.
Yes.
I believe our social services department performs at a high level, and we do our best to meet those high expectations. But I think there are some places in the state that there were lacking, and so I think this is well-intentioned. I just think it's hard to create a document such as this and a binding document with performance standards when you've got 100 counties...
100 different counties and 100 different administrations of that. So, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Most pleasure, the board.
Chairman, I would make a motion to designate Andy and Dolly as the signatories to bind the county to the terms and conditions of the MOU.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Louder. Is that correct? Okay. I couldn't quite hear. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item seven, board and committee appointments, presenter Andy Lucas, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item before you is the Stanley Community College Board of Trustees. There are two appointments. You have two members. There's terms that will expire, and they're seeking to have two members appointed for a four-year term, beginning July 1, 2018, running through June 30 of 2022. They're asking, the Community College actually sent a letter asking for the reappointment of Mr. Brooks. One of the other members of the board, current board, is trying to find the names here. Dolly, Daisy Washington is actually another appointment. They're not asking for her to be reappointed because I believe the governor, they've put her name forward for the governor to appoint that position. And so in your packet, they've put for Mr. Brooks, as well as Ms. Nadine Bowers, as their recommendations to you from the Board of Trustees, as I understand it. So these were, these will be two members serving a four-year term. I do know that in talking to the president, if you decide not to appoint any member who's currently on the board, they'd really like you to do that action this evening, because they have a board meeting in June, later this week, that will actually recess our meeting, have for a joint meeting. And they would like to be able to recognize anyone at that June meeting, because they won't meet again until July or August. I believe it's actually August, I don't think they have a July meeting. And so if you're not going to appoint one of the current members, then they would like to have that information this evening so that they can appropriately recognize any of those individuals at their meeting on Thursday evening. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. There's numerous applications in your packet for consideration.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioners, you've got a list of different applications, and I will open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I would echo the Community College's request and nominate Joe Brooks. I would also like to nominate Keisha Smith, who was in the list. My understanding is Ms. Bowers probably will not be able to serve adequately over the next 12 to 18 months due to some issues, personal issues.
Mr. Chairman.
I've got a nomination for Keisha Smith and Joe Brooks. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Georgia Harvey and Gerald Wayne Effer.
Are there any other nominations? All right. Want to close nominations, I guess each commissioner will have two votes. Those wishing to vote for Keisha Smith, if you will, just raise your hand so I can kind of count what we've got. All right, we've got three votes for Keisha Smith, votes for Joe Brooks. We've got one, two, three. Okay, I've got five, Joe Brooks. I've got six for Joe Brooks, sorry, let's see, Georgia Harvey. We've got one, two, three, four votes for Georgia Harvey, and votes for Gerald Effer. We've got two votes for Gerald Effer. All right, it looks like we've got six for Joe Brooks and four for Georgia Harvey. They will be the new, two new members for the Stanley Community College Board of Trustees. Congratulations to Joe Brooks, and thank you for his continued service, and congratulations to Ms. Harvey. Item B, Economic Development Commission appointees. Let's get to it. Let's see, we had Ryan McIntyre's resignation recently due to things going on at work, he just could not get to the meeting. So we've got two applications there for consideration for possible appointment to the EDC Board to fulfill his term to serve until August 7 of 2019. What's the pleasure of the board there?
Mr. Chairman.
Got Commissioner Morgan?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Jeff James.
Got a nomination of Dr. Jeff James. Do we have any other nominations? Commissioner Morgan, would you like to move to appoint him by acclamation?
I'd nominate Elizabeth Roberts.
They've got two nominations, Dr. Jeff James. Elizabeth Roberts. Assuming no other nominations. Close the nominations. Each commissioner will get one vote. Those in favor of Dr. Jeff James, if you will, just raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those in favor of Elizabeth Roberts, if you will, raise your hand. One. All right, Dr. James will be the individual to replace Mr. McIntyre until August 7, 2019, on the EDC Board. Item C, Central Illinois Workforce Development Board. Get to that. We've got a letter requesting the appointment of Ms. Monica Johnson as the private sector representative for Stanley County on the CWDV for a two-year term. What's the pleasure of the board?
Monica Johnson.
Got a motion and a second for Monica Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item eight, North Carolina DOT Transportation Project Prioritization Resolution, presenter Andy Lucas.
Thank you, members of the board. This item is actually the widening of a portion of US 52 from Dennis Road to Deland Road. This is referencing SPOT ID H170133. This item actually scored very well at the statewide level of the state's strategic improvement plan, and really, it relies on division points to gain enough support at the regional level. There's three levels of funding, the statewide, and the regional, and then the division level. And the statewide has the largest pot of money, and the regional level is the second largest, and then the division level is smaller. And so this is a $35 million project. We've expressed, staff has expressed and advocated for this project to both Scott Cole and our DOT board member that represents our region. And I included that correspondence in the email, and you also got, I also included Scott's response to our correspondence. I think it's important that the board, some of you may have contacted Scott or our board member directly, but I think it's important that the board be on record in supporting this project in hopes that we can further advocate and potentially sway their opinions on this project and hopefully gain their support so that it will gain more regional points and get in the, getting the funding stream. This is a very important project, both from a safety perspective because of the number of accidents that have been on that road, and I believe from an economic development perspective, because we're limited in terms of four-lane access in Stanley County, and this is a north-south route that really could help us connect 85, or the state really connect 85 with US 74, which is now a very strategic corridor with respect to the port and moving freight and logistics. So I think it really helps with connectivity in the region. So it's not just benefiting Stanley County, but it's benefiting the entire Charlotte region, and it also addresses some safety concerns, both for our local residents and those folks who are traveling through. So I would ask... So, I would ask for the board's support of the resolution, to send it to the folks at the state, to see if we can gain their support. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman McIntyre.
Is this, it'll be a four lanes from Dennis Road all the way into the four lanes that I want?
The project does call for it to be four-lane, yes. This would be sort of a phase one towards getting that whole corridor four-lane, but yes, this would, that's what this specific project would do, yes.
How far is it?
I don't have the number of miles in front of me. I don't want to even guess, I mean, I would say it's more than five and less than 10, but I don't, I don't have that specific number in front of me. Dennis Road's roughly halfway between Norwood and Alamo, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Efer.
I'll make a motion, we approve the NC DOT resolution.
Got a motion to approve the resolution before us, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Swain. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item nine, Resolution calling for a 1/4 cent sales tax special advisory referendum, presenter Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a follow-up to a conversation the board had actually last week, I believe, early last week, where we sought some additional ballot language. Really, this resolution, and we also got feedback from the school board, who took action last week to unanimously support an additional 1/4 cent sales tax. And so, this is a follow-up to that, that this resolution would call for the Board of Elections to place that 1/4 cent sales tax question on the November 6, 2018 ballot for consideration by the voters. And then, obviously, depending on how that legislation moves, that ballot question will either be the one that it is today by statute, or will be amended by that bill that Representative Burr amended, that would add some clarifying language to that ballot question, which would focus in on public education, and also sort of give the voter an idea of how much, how much actually this is per $100 that they may spend, which is 25 cents. So, that would all be dictated by whatever happens with that piece of legislation, because essentially, that legislation will take the place of the language that is in place today by statute. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Efer.
Just a question, was that supposed to be heard today? Or when was that?
It was, it was on the House calendar today, I think second reading was this evening, 7 o'clock, and so, when they, when they go into session. So, it'll likely get heard this evening and then heard again tomorrow, and then it will be passed over to the Senate.
Andy, I've got one question, and the board may not even want to do this, but just notice the resolution, would it be possible for us to have a, if we do decide to pass this, to have a signature line for all members? I just think that this is one thing...
Absolutely, I'd love that.
We've got the schools, you know, the schools have signed it all, and I mean, it may, I understand it may not be necessary, but...
Certainly, we can do that. I mean, if you want to go ahead and pass it this evening with that, basically saying you want, you know, a resolution that has all the signatures on it, so that we can get that prepared, and we can bring it to your meeting on Thursday night at the Community College, everyone can sign it, but go ahead and pass it tonight with that, with that amendment to the resolution, that there would be an opportunity for all members of the board to sign it, if they were in favor of it.
Is there any, any member that would have a problem with that? I just thought that, just, I know it doesn't need to be there, but just a sign of our full support. All right, what's the pleasure of the board, then?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion, we adopt the resolution to seek the 1/4 cent sales tax, and with the amendment that all commissioners, signatures.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Second. Second from Commissioner Morgan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 10, Consent Agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, is presented.
Motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Do I have a second? Second. Second from Commissioner Efer. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, we've got, now to public comment, I didn't have anyone sign up, is there anyone here that wishes to speak here in public comment? All right, board and comments and announcements, start with Commissioner Morgan.
I'd just like to offer my condolences to the family of the Eastside firefighter who lost his life last night.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Lauder.
I would echo the same, same thing, remember the family, but also remember the members of the Eastside Volunteer Fire Department. As I was coming in, I saw Channel 9 down there reporting it, sad situation.
Vice Chairman McIntyre.
Just condolences to the family and to the members of the Eastside Fire Department, so, got to be quite a tragedy.
Commissioner Lauder. Commissioner Efer.
I would echo the same thing, and for the Eastside and the family, but I would like to also mention, since Becky's here, tomorrow, I think at 2 o'clock, or around 2 o'clock, they will be honoring at their annual birthday party of 90-plus. They are 114 that has responded to coming, 114, that's a lot of folks, 90 or plus, along with their families and guests, they're expecting 217 people. The oldest person, if, I guess it's a she, can make it, will be 107. So, I just, I mean, that's just amazing. So, I'm sorry I cannot be there tomorrow, but good luck and congratulations with that event.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Swain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to echo the comments of previous commissioners about the firefighter from Eastside. I don't know why, it hit me especially hard this morning when I found that out. I think I've been in the fire service 12 years of my adult life, and I spent some time in in high school, which was much of the time that this young man spent in the fire service. So, it's just a sad situation. He was really driven and wanted to help somebody that day, and it just wasn't in the will. I won't read it, because I probably won't be able to make it through with a straight face, but if you get time, Google the fireman's prayer and read that, and really especially think about the family as you read through that tonight. But, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. I just wanted to point out, we've got a young lady sitting out in the audience that's been attending some of our meetings and workshops and here with the staff, and I'm going to let Andy introduce who she is.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, we have a summer management intern from Western Carolina University, Bailey Emrick, who's with us the month of June, and she's doing a great job and learning a lot about county government. She wants to be a county manager, and so...
Bless her heart.
Yeah, so, she's getting, she's told her it's going to be like drinking from a fire hose over a course of a period of a month, and so, she's, she's been a trooper, and like you say, been attending a lot of our meetings, and Bailey actually resides in Anson County, and so, it's been a pleasure to have her, and she's actually getting around to the different departments and spending some time with them. She asked me, she said, "How do I learn about county government?" I said, "You really need to get out in the departments and understand what they do, the challenges they have," and things, so she's been doing that, and the departments have been great to open their arms and let her have that opportunity. It's a great learning experience, and hopefully she'll continue her desire to work in local government. We need folks to enter local government and to carry this profession on, because it's a very, very worthy profession, that every day you get to get up and help folks. So, we, we're glad to have her, and hopefully we can help her along with her career.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Bailey. Welcome to hanging out with us for a few weeks, months. I guess my only comments would just echo what other board members have said. Our firefighters and folks are backbone of this community, very hard-working folks, and when we call for them, they come, they don't discriminate at all, in a very, very tough We actually are going to need to go back into closed session, so, need a motion from the board to go back into closed session.
Make a motion to recess this meeting and go back into closed session, or consult with attorney.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Morgan, all in favor, signify by saying aye.